I thought I'd ask Father to start us out with a prayer this morning.
If I may give an introduction to a prayer, for those of you who go to the off-site meetings, one of the little things that we do is take a little snippet from "The Chosen." And what happened is that Jesus is sitting down with the new gang, and they're not too sure about each other, and they're not too sure about Him either, but they're very interested. And He sits down and He says, "Now, I'm gonna send you out, and I want you to go to this country, and that country, and the other thing, and whatever." And to cut a long story short, He says, they said to Him, "Well, when are we gonna be trained?" He says, "This is it." And they said, "Well, what are we gonna say?" "What you've heard me say." And they're looking at each other because they didn't have any confidence at all that the Holy Spirit would come and help them, and guide them, and strengthen them. It's not all about us doing it, but it is surrendering ourselves to the movement of what goes on inside us that is genuinely authentic. It's not heady stuff. It's real about ourselves. So let us pray. Oh God our Father, Your Son Jesus wants to send us out to proclaim what our experience of Jesus is. And we share that with each other to encourage each other. But so often, we don't listen. So while we're here today, help us to hear the person next to us. Not necessarily what they say, but what they're trying to get across, so that we begin to see who they are, what makes them tick. So let that spirit be on us trusting that the reason you're doing this is to free us up from our fears and our doubts, even to express them, so that we will not be afraid through Christ our Lord.
Amen.
Thank you, Father. So thank you all for coming this morning. This is the first two Town Hall sessions that we're gonna have in order to do really two things. First, to kind of catch you up on some important initiatives that we've been working on these past few months here at St. Francis. And more importantly, number two, to get your feedback and reaction. And it was kind of sort of appropriate, I think, on the drive up, my youngest daughter has got me hooked on Audible. You know what that is? It's those books, you know, you can listen in the car, you know? And so I was listening this morning, coming up, to a new book called Walking with St. Francis, from privilege to prayer to activism. And I almost couldn't get out of the car because I was in a good place in the book. You know, I've been reading mysteries. I'm an Agatha Christie fan too. So I was reading some of those before, and Kathy has caught me in the garage when I come back from here because I'll be listening. And Plaro will have almost solved it, right? And I come in the garage, and it's not done yet. So I'm sitting in the car, and she's like, got the door open, like, "What are you doing?" Just a minute, because I almost know what it is. But anyway, this book is about applying the lessons from St. Francis as we move from our privilege through to activism, which is kind of what we are doing here with these new initiatives here at the parish. So it turned out to be really good slash listen/read this morning as I was coming up. So we have four initiatives that we wanted to highlight across these two days. And so we're gonna do two of them this morning. As you see on the screen, we're gonna talk a little bit about parish vision and mission, and how that sort of does a strategic orientation and alignment for the parish and our ministries, and how that sets us up for success, and what that means for us. And then we're gonna kind of drill down onto one of our ministry areas in faith formation that we've sort of retooled and refocused. And we're gonna talk a little bit about how we see that working. And then we're gonna, in both cases, what I'm gonna do is spend just a few minutes kind of orienting you on the work that we've been doing with some small planning teams. And then we wanna hear from you about what you think of these ideas, any additional thoughts you may have. And then certainly, any of you that wanna volunteer to help us, we're gonna like lock the door so you can't get out to volunteer. Okay? So the idea though is a little bit of orientation for me, just enough that we have some conversation. Because that's the objective here for the Town Hall, is for us to have some conversation. You've got some material on your tables already where you can give us some feedback in the way of a comment card. And you've also got some other material there that kind of gives you an orientation about where you're going. We'll also obviously take your comments live while you're here. If you want to give us comments later, you're welcome to do that. As you notice, Maggie has videoing these things. We're gonna have them posted on the website, so if you go back and look at them later. And also so that folks who couldn't make it with us this morning will also be able to look at them and give us feedback, okay? So as I said, what we're doing is, we're kind of doing something in the footsteps of St. Francis. Now, I tried really hard to make that font smaller than you can read. I think I almost got there. I realized last night I was looking at this, I'm like, "Okay, wow, that's really small font." The point of this slide is, if you remember the story of St. Francis, he goes into the church at San Damiano, and he hears the voice of Christ from the cross telling him to go and rebuild my church. And I love Francis because Francis is a guy of action, and he's also a very literal guy. So he's like me, he's like an engineer, right? So he thinks Christ means what? Go rebuild that church. So he starts working on the chapel of San Damiano and little churches around Assisi. But it dawns on him at some point that that's not what Christ meant. What Christ meant was, go and rebuild the church by reigniting the faith of His fellow Catholics, His fellow Christians, by through prayer and through proclamation of the gospel, and through commitment to helping the poor. And so that's how Francis starts establishing what we know today as the Franciscan order. But he started by taking that literally. Well, so what we're gonna do is, we've been trying to walk in the footsteps of Francis in the sense that we're also trying to rebuild the church. And we're gonna start here in the parish of St. Francis by reigniting our engagement among the people of faith here in this parish through those same kind of things. A different way to proclaim the gospel, a new way of educating and learning about the faith, a new way of sharing that with each other, new forms of prayer, new ways of engagement. We're sort of, you heard Father say this the other day, we sort of model this almost on like a new kind of Pentecost where we're gonna let the Holy Spirit drop energy on us in a new kind of way. So that's what these four initiatives that we're gonna be talking about over the next couple of days are really about. But they really have that same flavor that St. Francis had when he heard Christ telling him to go and rebuild his church. So if we're gonna do that, then the first thing we're gonna talk about is, what about the vision and mission for the parish? Because that kind of sets our direction. In my secular job, up until I left that in February, I've been a strategic planner essentially for like the last 42 years. And so that's the first thing we're gonna talk about is sort of strategic alignment of ministries. Where are we going? Do we know where we're going? How are we gonna get there? What is our path forward? What is the vision that we have for the parish? And do we know when we're gonna get there, and how do we know? And then what's our mission as a parish? Do we know what our purpose is? How are we gonna execute on that purpose? All of those things that connect us all together in an alignment that's strategically focused. So that's the first thing we're gonna talk about this morning. And then I'm gonna talk about, if we drill down in there to one of the initiatives that fit in that strategic umbrella, we're gonna talk about faith formation, which is something that we focused on early when I first got here to St. Francis, is how do we rebuild our faith formation efforts in a way to re-energize, again, kind of like St. Francis was challenged to do, so that we can re-energize how we do what we do as a parish. So, purpose, mission, mission, vision, and impact, okay? And don't worry, there, it looks like there's gonna be a quiz later, but there actually won't be. So you can relax. When I use this at the office, I usually say, "There's a quiz later, so keep your pencil down." All right, so those four terms are key to our understanding about the way strategic planning works, okay? So even though vision is the little thing kind of in the middle, that's the thing that starts at the top of our work, okay? Vision is what we aspire to do. It's the long-range thing out there on the horizon that we're all trying to go to. So as a parish, we have some vision of where we wanna end up. And then we have to have a way to get there. That's what our mission is about, how do we get there? Our purpose is just what it sounds like. What is our purpose, okay? It's the thing that guides where we're supposed to go. And the impact is the thing that matters the most. That for us is in our ministries, that's where we deliver the impact. That's what happens on the ground. So all of this stuff connects together. If it connects together properly, then we have an effective strategic plan that pushes us forward in the way that we want to go, okay? So I just turned all of you guys into strategic planners. And so that's what we wanna think about, is strategically, where do we wanna go? And how do we wanna get there, and why, okay? And so that's what this is all about. So what does make a good vision statement? If we're trying to think about where do we wanna be way out there in the future, how do we go about figuring that out, okay? If I'm trekking somewhere, I gotta decide where that somewhere is, and have to be able to describe it well, and then I have to be able to hold on to that point. The important point about a vision statement is, you don't wanna keep messing with it, okay? Because if you think about it like this picture right here, you don't wanna keep changing where you're trying to hike to because you get lost at some point, right? And you run out of provisions, and people fall off the side of the mountain, and pretty soon you're in trouble. So vision statements typically aren't changed very frequently, okay? They describe where you wanna be, okay? They articulate what the future state is supposed to look like. So this is where you get to imagine what the future is gonna be. You don't worry about how you're gonna make it happen. You just say, "This is Oz. Oz is gonna look like this," okay? And you describe it as completely as you can. So it can be long, vision statements typically are, okay? And they're complete, and they're comprehensive. And they should be exciting, okay? So you wanna be able to get people to buy into this vision statement, right? Okay, so they need to be, they need to sound like a place you want to be, okay? It's the why, that last bullet's probably the most important. It's the why behind our organization, okay? So for us as a parish, it's the why for us as a parish, okay? So not only is it the where we wanna be, but it's the why, okay? So we actually have a vision statement. Leadership team's been looking at this and decided, and we've had it for a little while, and we decided that we kind of like the way it looks. So we haven't changed it. This is the current vision statement. Build and maintain a culture so that the parish at St. Francis of Assisi is Christ-centered. Being Christ-centered means that the parish community, both individually and communally, recognizes the real presence of Jesus in the Eucharist as being the center of all of its thoughts and actions. Sounds pretty good. Sounds like us. Sounds like us? Or sounds like what we want us to be, right? Remember, this is the, back to that picture, this is the point of that place where all those guys are hiking through the snow, right? When we get there, right? So if this is the vision, then one of the things we gotta do is, we gotta figure out, first of all, we gotta figure out how to get there. And then we gotta figure out, how do we know when we got there, right? So we have seven attributes of that kind of parish, that Christ-centered parish. Again, developed by leadership over the last year or so, or maybe a little longer. And we said, these are kind of our measuring sticks against this parish vision. And when we can check the box on all seven of those, then we're there. Ta-da. Okay? So we can look down this list and talk about, we're not gonna do that right now, because that's not the point of this. Because I wanna walk through the rest of these slides so we can have this conversation. But the idea is, this is like a report card sort of, okay? So that we could, every so often, pull out this list and go, "Well gee, how are we doing against these metrics?" Okay? We don't like to talk like this about a parish, okay? But I'm used to talking like this from my business, right? Because I'm in the business of strategic planning. So I'm used to having a scorecard, right? And going into the boss and saying, "Okay, here's where we are on our metrics." And we have a gap, right, between where we wanna be and where we are. And so if we have a gap, then we have to do what? We have to figure out how to close that gap. And so we have to put together a plan in order to close the gap, okay? So if we have these attributes, and we know what they are, and we know where we score on those attributes, and that helps us figure out what we have to work on in order to become this Christ-centered parish. Now, I'll give you a little secret. What happens about these attributes? Do we get there? Yeah, they're always evolving, right? So do we actually arrive and say, "Phew, boy, I'm so glad we got there. We can stop now." No, we're always working, right? Okay, but we have a goal that we work toward. We have a target, right? Okay, and that's important because that allows us to focus our resources, and our people, and our energy on something. Instead of just saying, "All right, let's get out there and do what." Okay, that's the whole point, okay, of having the vision, okay? Well, if that's the vision, now I gotta have a mission, okay? And I actually was trying last night to embed, I'm not very good at this on PowerPoint, I was trying to embed some music in here because I was gonna play the Mission Impossible music. But then I thought, "Okay, well now that's the wrong message," right? Because I don't want it to sound like Mission Impossible. I want it to sound like Mission Possible, okay? So I finally told Kathy after an hour of fooling around with that, "Okay, I'm gonna stop doing that because I sent the wrong message." But if the vision is where we're trying to go, then the mission is how, okay? If the vision is where and why, the mission is how, okay? And this is the one that I've actually had the ministry group coordinators, I turned them into a mission drafting team. They were thrilled, by the way, to work on this, okay? And this is where now, the vision, like I said, is supposed to be flowery, and long, and complicated, and it inspires people. Mission statements are different. Mission statements have to be pithy and to the point. You see on the slide there, T-shirt test, okay? Mission can't fit on a T-shirt, it's too long, okay? Gotta be short, direct, to the point, okay? What you do, who you do it for, how you do it, what it achieves. That's a mission statement, okay? So they can be really clear what you're all about, okay? So, oops, pushed it too hard. So we're in the middle right now, actually a little more than in the middle, of draft mission statement work. And that team has come up with, out of about five or six that we were working on, we got a couple that we like. Embrace and live the call of Jesus through community discipleship, or serve others through our parishioners and ministries to form a personal relationship with Jesus Christ. Both of those are still under construction. You're gonna get a chance to weigh in on these in just a couple of minutes. So both of those are still, you can't tell because I, well, this projector's gonna show you, but there's a big construction project in the background there because this is a big construction project. We're still working, okay? But the point of either one of those mission statements is, it should tell other people and us what we're up to, okay? And it kind of fit on a T-shirt. I guess if it's a big T-shirt, or you turn it vertically, or anything. Okay, so we got the vision, we got the mission. Now remember, we're talking about purpose. What is your purpose? Okay? So each of the five ministry groups has a purpose, okay? And these group coordinators got sick and tired of me saying to them, "What is your purpose? Tell me what your purpose is." And they looked at me like, "Well, but I mean, we're working." I'm like, "No, that's not what I ask you. What is your purpose?" "Well, we have these ministries." "No, what is your purpose?" Because you have to be able to say what your purpose is. Because the purpose helps us focus, how does your purpose line up to the mission of the parish that helps to achieve the vision? For each of the group coordinator's purpose ultimately is gonna trickle down to the ministries because the ministries are then gonna set goals that help the ministry group achieve its purpose. So everything fits together now, okay? And so now the ministries understand why they do what they do because their goals fit the purpose that drive the mission to achieve the vision. And that helps us with budgeting, and assignment of resources, and all that kind of stuff. So what is your purpose? We have draft purpose statements, again, that the group coordinators and their teams have worked on. And I'm not gonna read all those out, but each of them have written something that's unique to their areas that describes what their purpose is, and how those purposes connect to the mission. Now, you might be thinking, "But wait, the mission statement isn't final yet." And that's right, it's not. So once we finalize the mission statement, groups have to go back and look at their purpose again. They might have to tweak it a little bit, okay? So that's why these are current draft purpose statements, okay? So ultimately, we'll get that connected so that everything links up. And that's really important because like I said, that's what ultimately will drive annual budgeting and resource commitments. And we'll be able to decide right away, should we be involved in ministry X or Y? Well, that's a great question. Does that help me achieve my purpose? Does it support the mission and the vision of the parish? So that's one of those filtering things that will help us right away decide, is that something we need to be involved in? So that's again, part of the reason for putting this stuff together. Okay, so I'm done. Now it's time. Yes, sir. So in addition to a purpose, can we also have a motto? If you want one, what would you like your motto to be? You can certainly suggest a motto. You wanna like something we can like pull in the back of the picture? Sure? Okay, so this is the place where we start your feedback. One thing we wanna do for sure is that mission statement thing. So on your comment card, there is not a question for sure there that says specifically about the mission statement. But I want you to find a blank spot somewhere on there and write either A or B on it, and turn your card in so that we get a vote, okay, for one or the other of those mission statements. Because we're just curious about which one of those you like best. And then anything else I talked about is open for comment, or discussion, or anything else you wanna talk about. And I've got the microphone, and we'll be happy to bring it to you so everybody can hear you.
So in many ways, what you're just really asking us to do, because we do an awful lot of things here, okay? And it's good work, et cetera. But you're really asking us to get down to the nitty-gritty and say, "Why are you doing that? What's the purpose of that? And is it fitting in to what is..." It's just getting down to the nitty-gritty, and it's very hard work, I think.
I can see what you've done here, and you've categorized and outlined and everything pretty much what we've been doing. But what I don't see is a lot of new people. What I see here is about 50 people that come to everything. And nowhere in here do I see where it wants to provide opportunities for our parishioners to be involved, to be active, to have chances to learn. It's just putting bullet points out. So I think somehow or another, in our vision statement and in these purposes of the different ministries, we need to find a way to really make people feel that we want them to be a part of it.
So Patty, you're asking for an outreach program.
I'm asking for something a little more exciting than what we see up here on the bulletin.
It's the second thing that I was gonna say. It's the same people here.
Let me follow what she just said. Has this parish ever done a similar sheet to all the members of every mass? On a certain Sunday, I don't know if that's been done because I'm new to the parish. But has that been done, where this sheet, where you can get involved in all these ministries, and put your name and phone number in the back, and put it in the collection? Has that ever been done here?
They have to speak fair.
I, I can, I can speak, um, well, I'm not, you know, anybody special with CCW. I'm not anything special with CCW, but on, on the three masses we had and Friday night, CCW passed out an invitation to women to attend our meeting on tomorrow. So, there is an outreach that they actually just did, inviting people to please come and see what CCW is all about, so that happened.
Can, can, can I just suggest that at this time, that we not do this right now, but after we start talking and writing down, then this discussion uh, can, can go to work. Say, how are we gonna do this?
No, I know.
Oh, they just have one. Who else has? Who else has a comment? Anybody else got a comment?
I have one. We've been doing what I call stewardship, weekends about once a month. And every ministry group.
Put it right up here, right close.
Every ministry group provides a light breakfast after mass. And everyone comes and has a piece of paper out to join. I think probably the most excellent group that prepares for this is, are the Glories. And people do come forward. But they're not coming in rows, and I don't know if they really understand what each ministry group is aiming for. So I think this effort to provide a commonality in our goal and find ways of enabling all the little ministries here at, um, St. Francis is a great thing.
Bear with me in a, maybe a too feeble attempt trying to put all this together from my perspective, you're just from, you got a counselor in front of you right now. So, what I'm urging everybody to do, as you answer, and I'm trying to address everybody that's spoken right now. Try to, when you, when you respond to what Deacon Gary has put out to us, try to look at it, a big picture that's been mentioned, the big pic, what's the big picture that you're looking at? It's a big picture, all in common.
Yeah, so we have a mind.
And then how each individual, each one of you, how you uniquely, with your unique godly gifts, that he means for us to bring together the body of Christ for all a piece of this. How do, so identify what your gifts are, as much as you can, your gifts. And so how you might be able to fit in with the big picture as God intends us to be. Try, so, think about that before you, you write anything down, let, let that sink in. Who are ya? Who are you that got it created? What do you got? Okay. That's the best I got right now.
Other thoughts?
In reading your, uh, your two, uh, possibilities on a mission statement, A, sounds great, but it's really vague, and B is much more specific and more how you would do it, which I think makes more sense for a mission statement.
I was just going to agree with Patty. We, there are the same people here that I see at every single meeting, we've got to get the rest of the parish involved. There's a whole lot of us, and we could do so much more. I don't know why you do that, that, that's your job.
So what should, no, not necessarily, what's your idea about getting more people involved?
I think you really have to push it at masses. This is being recorded. And you really need to push it, you need to hand out these pieces of paper at every mass because people don't read the bulletin, they don't go on line. The only way you get some of these people is to push a piece of paper in front of them, hopefully they'll look at it.
Okay, that's an idea, thank you.
Hi, so, yeah, I'm all about getting new people involved. And, um, I've been working with the welcome group, I was an angel uh, for that, for that group, and I feel like there's more that has to be done as people come into the parish to actually form relationships with others. Not just about what they can do and what they can join and how they can serve, but they need a sense of welcome and belonging that I think needs to be more intimate. So I'm pushing for small groups, um, for newcomers. I have an idea, I have a plan, you can get my outline soon. Um, I've worked with another ministry at another time that, um, really, uh, provided, provides an opportunity for people to share, to become friends, to have a sense of being a part of, belonging. I think we have to go back to that kind of foundation to build our community so that, um, this is home, but home beyond what's my, what parish do I belong to, where do I live, no. They, they need to feel like this is their spiritual base. And that there are those who are here who want to know them, who want to reach out their hands to get to know them. So, I'm about some small group stuff going on, um, to help make that happen. It would seem to me that once people feel like they really truly belong here, that they would then be more willing to show up, and maybe we'd see some new faces. So before moving on to sign up for our ministry, how are you gonna serve? I think we need to focus on how are we gonna help people feel like they belong, truly belong. And I think the Women's Club is, is a way in. I think we need more ways in, that's why I like this small group idea.
It's on.
Okay. I'm gonna give my greeter's speech. I have the privilege of being responsible for having greeters at the weekend masses. And my kind of mantra, I guess, to them is keep in mind first impression. We all do it, the first time we meet anybody, a doctor, the clerk at Walmart, whomever. Whatever impression you get from them is how you feel about where you are. And this is really important at church. And I try to get them to step up, I try to have them particularly reach out to those they've never met. You know, who are you, just visitors? You know, have you, have you joined the parish? Initiate some kind of interest that they wanna know more about us. And I think one of the ways we can do that is to follow it up. Um, not picking on anybody if we have any ushers here. But, other than pointing, there's a seat, and there's a seat, and there's a seat, to engage in some kind of, you know, actual welcome. So that beyond that, um, and I have to say, personally, I'm a little offended by the brief vision or mission statement for Liturgy and Music because we're far more than just setting the table. But I think that if we could gradually figure out ways and whether it is, you know, small groups or, or do a better job with, um, Donut Weekend, one of the things that I've also thought about is, I think at least once or twice a year, we should have name tags Sunday. And there's a, there's, uh, one of the parishioners, um, Carol Lamb, I think it is, she makes the point of sitting in a different place every Sunday so that she can introduce herself to whoever is sitting in that pew. So I, I think there's a, a, a lot of little bitty steps that we can take, and I realize it doesn't have a lot to do with what Deacon Gary's trying to work on here, but it's a starting point, we need, we need to get more than these fifty people showing up. And that's my thought, I'm sticking to it.
Couple of points, first of all, at the gala, we were all given name tags that can be used over and over again. And I think it would be a good idea that we all wear our name tags every time we're at Mass, be it during the week or on Sundays.
Or a name tag, there's lots of names.
Exactly right, any name tag, but wearing. Okay? Many other churches do this so that people can get to learn who you are, instead of just staying in their own little shell. Secondly, it's our responsibility, each and every one of us at this parish, to welcome anybody who's new or a stranger. Don't just depend on the welcome committee or the greeters, yes, they are first line. Okay, and the welcome committee has a big job, not only do they just welcome people, there's questionnaires to be filled out, what ministry would you be interested in? Before you can get to that, ask them what gifts they feel they have that they've received from the Holy Spirit, and that would help guide them to the ministry that they're in. Or not in, but wanna be in, or don't know that they're, you know, capable of doing. The welcome committee is very, very important because they meet with the new parishioners one-on-one, whether it's for fifteen minutes or an hour, whether they get enrolled in an Angels program and spend time with an angel walking with them. I can remember when Sherry and I did welcome committee, we didn't have the Angels program going then, but there were several newcomers that, you know, we'd say, hey, why don't we hook up for breakfast one time or whatever? It's all our responsibility, not just the Angels, not just the welcome committee, not just the greeters. And by doing that, by welcoming people, they can see that we have Christ in us. And they'll wanna be a part of that.
Um, this, uh, successful, is this? We have successfully communicated with this group over and over and over and over again. So, you were working on a communication committee or something, which I neglected to properly communicate my interest in serving on. Um, but I think that's where we're at now, we need to all sit down and figure out how are we gonna, these are all wonderful ideas, this was a wonderful group of people, we need to figure out how to get all these ideas communicated to the rest so that, these opportunities to take part. And I think that's a really important word, opportunity is to take part. We're not gonna drag people into anything successfully. Or communicate better than they're currently being communicated. Make sense? I agree.
Okay, I would just like to say that Father Woods has been an inspiration in this area. He never lets an unfamiliar face go unrecognized. Um, when we were new here, we were invited to a dinner at the center, and he placed an existing parishioner at each table, and that person made sure she spoke to everybody at our table and welcomed us and shared information. And that was a catalyst for Mike and I to get involved, and that was two years ago. So, I think that was, you know, a very welcoming moment and, um, really just a wonderful experience. And Father Woods, I see him doing this, so he's really, um, showing us the way that we're supposed to be with new parishioners and people coming.
I agree with Mike, these are all great ideas in the communication, I'm new to the parish, uh, maybe I missed this, but I know, uh, these ideas of small groups, every, these wonderful ministries, do we ever do a personal, um, witness? Like Mary, you would witness at Mass, like pulpit pitch about why you're part of, you're, why you were moved to be part of your group, or why the small group? Because your small group is a wonderful idea, but just like you said about Father Mike, it's a personal invitation, he's right there, and so that personal witness of why, and I, is this shut off? Um, Ross, I know one time, uh, you're, the donuts and, uh, when each, um, ministry has things in here, you did a powerful witness for the social committee. You know, you said, and you, and you told your personal why you were moved to do that, so, uh, that's just my input, is that personal, personal, personal invitation. But I have to be vulnerable to share it. And not, and one-on-one is wonderful, but the only time we really have that captive audience are at the masses. So to, uh, once Mass is over, it's great if they come through here and get their donuts, but do they take time, you know, to listen, or, or are we talking, I don't know. I am, I may have missed all this because I'm new to the parish, maybe you were already doing it, and I've just missed it. But I know it's, it was a powerful thing for me at other parishes that I've been, I, I saw this person really meaningful, short, but don't have to be a long, but it was a powerful witness. And then I wanted to go back out and, and find that person and ask more about it. Or they handed something out, somebody else suggested.
Okay. Thank you for all this great feedback. No, really.
If I, if I've just been making an observation, I, I don't, uh, come out too nice in this, but it's okay. Uh, one of the things we prayed for is open to the Holy Spirit. And it just happened. You, you heard me just say, well, why don't we, uh, just leave that for the moment, and we will, uh, get back to our papers. And there was an openness to the Holy Spirit, it went another way. It just doesn't have to be Father said, or whatever, but Father must give his voice, but what happened was, everybody had a voice. And somehow, out of that, we can, we can go forward, but there was great listening, great ideas, and where it fit into just what you talked about, maybe we're not too sure about that yet, because you think like this. Uh, and you're training us in a sense to think like this, and I think in some ways, all of it focuses back on how it is we go forward. And I, I just wanted to say, thank you that, and even, I wish I had kept my mouth shut, you know? And, but no, it's in opening your mouth that it awakens something else and some, and that's how the spirit works, and, and I'm just very grateful, thank you.
Deacon Gary looks at me like, oh, no, not her again.
I think one of the things that we first need to do, and I feel because of what Father just said, those of us who are coming over and over, I think we need to start with being thankful that we belong to such a great parish. And give credit to all of those who have taken it this far because of Father Michael's inspiration. When I see the growth in this parish since he became our pastor is remarkable, and it is what's given us the foundation for what Deacon Gary is now trying to help us build on. So, I just wanted to say thank you, I, I feel like I have found my faith and I finally have enough courage to step up and say, come along for the ride. to step up and say, come along for the ride.
And one way to get new people to show up is bring a friend.
That's right.
When you come to this thing, bring a friend.
I think it's... It's be your friend, you know? Oh, what did I want to say?
What's your name?
Father, I'm Deborah LaPorte.
That was for everybody.
Speaking of how aggressive Father is about meeting new people, he has met me a dozen times. And I appreciate that, I appreciate being sought out, and who are you? You know, we're talk... I think that, okay, you've got a group of people here who come to everything, and who do everything, and really support the parish. And you kind of get an attitude of, why don't these other people come? You know, I asked them to come, and they don't come. Or I... Something that had occurred for me with the welcome committee, it was like, well, I ask people if they want to have an angel visit them, and they don't want to. And it's like, well, how about this? How about saying, I want to meet you. I want to spend time with you, instead of do you want to spend time with me? I feel like we need to be more aggressive about it, like Father is, about going to someone and saying, I want to take you out to coffee to get to know you better, because you're new in our parish, and I want to get to know you. Versus, oh, do you want to meet me for coffee? People will say, no. You know, we need to be aggressive like Father Mike, in going out there, putting it out there, and saying, you are welcome. I want you to be part of our... We want you to be part of our community, come on. And I'm going to put myself out there to make it happen, not expecting the newcomer to put themselves out there to make it happen. So these people, you know, this group who comes to everything, when we come to everything, I feel like, you know, we should know who's a newcomer, have our name tags on, and know who doesn't, and go for it. Go for somebody to pull them. And I think our evangelizing starts here, you know? Our big formation is in-house, before it can be out of house. So, I don't know, let's go for it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question. Option A up there says embrace and live the call of Jesus through community discipleship. What is community? Is that the St. Francis of Assisi Church community, or is that Eastern Tennessee?
Yes.
Option B says serve others, to our parishioners and ministries, to form a personal relationship with Jesus Christ. So how is going, looking out there, building my personal relationship with Jesus Christ? I mean, how is, I mean, we seem to have... There's two totally opposite poles that we're talking about there. It's not something that's focused on any one thing. I mean, that's the way I'm reading what we have up there.
Right. And?
And what do they mean? I mean...
What is the call of Jesus? What is the call of Jesus? Okay, what do you think the call of Jesus is?
I've been watching The Chosen, and he calls people anyways, but he calls people to the Father. And that's... The mother calls us to the Son, who calls us to the Father.
Yeah, about Matthew 25.
I think I'm going to dare to be a little stronger than what I was before. I mentioned how, try, before you answer anything, be meditative, think carefully about what we all have in common, and then how you fit in with your gifts. Well, what we all have in common, and you could, don't you dare try to deny this. Everybody, we all have this in common in our church. What was just alluded to, what we are created to be in this time and place, is to do our very best to be reunited with God individually and together in the body of Christ. That's the global big picture that we all have in common. That's what we're struggling to do, period. Now, cut it out, just dig in, what do you have to offer? Who are you to help grow the body of Christ, period? What are your gifts? Dig in, don't be lazy about it, come on, period. Everybody, this is just full of riches, this whole group of gifts that are here. And they're unique, nobody else has them. And we're meant to join together. That's it, that's our work, that's our life. It's wonderful. You talk about being excited, how could you not be excited about it? This is very personal, this is all about a personal relationship. You've got it, with God and each other. So who are you? And put it out there, come on. Yes, we'll be favorable, you're that right. So what, look at Christ, come on, look at his apostles, come on.
I think you can have a chapel of 2,400 people.
Get that, get some locusts and hawby.
Amen, hallelujah. I was tempted today, and I didn't take that step. But I was going to ask my friends, are you going to be there this morning? Because I'm going to be there, are you going to come? And I think that's another way, invite your friends. You know people that you talk to regularly? Just say, I'm going to be there, do you want a ride? Want me to pick you up?
Come get you.
As Sherry said, I can pick you up.
This all's very good, and you're right, Russ. Each and every one of us has at least one gift, and maybe more. What we have to remember is every single one of us is on a different journey. Some of us are already of a relationship with Jesus, some of us don't even know how to go about it. And for everybody else out in the parish that comes to Mass, but doesn't participate in a ministry, they're all on a different journey. And we have to approach that journey carefully. Because if you approach with aggression, you're going to push them away. Assertiveness is a different story.
And enthusiasm.
Enthusiasm's great, but again, some people might be like, enough, you know? So you have to get to know the person, be it in five minutes, or five days, or five weeks. And you evangelize to them in their world, bringing Jesus to them. Okay, and we can't, if we push, we're going to push them right out the door. So you have to be careful.
Relying on Christ, you got to remember, that's number one. If we're relying on God to help us, none of us are capable of doing any of that, except with Him. That's number one, and you're okay. Everybody's got to make that personal decision. Okay, Lord, remember the rich person that walked away from Christ, he had it made. Well, no, again, you walked away. So everybody, you got to deal with your vulnerability, right? You've got to deal with that, period. Give it up to Him.
But you have to walk with people.
Yes, you suffer with them.
And sometimes say nothing, just listen.
Yeah. A lot of quiet people, some of these people that I expected to hear from, I haven't heard anything from, and I'm kind of surprised about, so. Nobody? Any quiet people want to say something? There we go.
Well, the easiest thing for me to remember is, reflect back, Sheri, and what was it like when you came to St. Francis? Back, what, 11, 12 years ago? And how you felt here at St. Francis? And what did you do about it? As long as I keep that in my mind, it's very helpful. Because we are a different parish today than 12 years ago. And this is a great parish. So I just remember what it was like when I first came here, and what it is like now. And I want to be on the vehicle that's making this parish better and better. So here I am, trying to do that. You know, there was a, it was daily Mass, and the gals and the guys were praying the rosary, and it was semi-dark in the church. And there was a lady in the back, and I could tell she was... Well, I knew she was new, because, well, that didn't mean that I'd never saw her before, but she just looked kind of lost. And me and my big mom went over, and I said, are you okay? Can I help you? And she wanted to stay for the rosary, but she thought, she didn't know anybody here. She was brand new. And I said, well, of course you can join them. And I said, you could go sit with them. But now she chose to sit kind of in the back. Because she, her comfort zone wasn't one that she felt she could be right up with them. But I found out she's my neighbor, around the corner, down the street. And a lovely person. And she's, she had an operation, because she had found out, I think after she moved here, that she had a situation where she's in chemotherapy right now. But she found out where I live, I mean, this all happened with a couple of encounters. She found out where I lived, and she says, oh, I know your neighbor. So I saw her the other day, and she was out walking. And it's like, it just keeps building, and building, and building. But if I hadn't said something to her that day, when, I mean, I knew she was kind of lost and wanted to be with that rosary group, but she wasn't sure how to go about it. Because she thought it was maybe just them. And I said, no, a lovely, lovely person. But I just remember what it was like when I first moved here, and came to St. Francis, and what it is now. And we just need to keep building, and building, and building. Because we've got a wonderful foundation. And the basement is built, and we're just going to be on the first level here, first floor, and just make it better and better. And I agree, we all have tremendous gifts. And we probably all know what they are. And somebody was talking about being on their journey in their little train car. And we talk about that all the time in the Hearts of Fire retreats. And where you are in your train car is where you should be. Because that's where you are. And, but you need to grow. And growing is good. It might be a little painful sometimes, but... Yeah, okay, I'll be quiet.
A lot of what we've been talking about just recently makes me think of, I'm an old chressaista, anybody else did chressia, right? Okay. So a lot of what you're talking about is fundamental to chressia. And you guys may have heard me talk about this before. There's a three-part method to chressia about make a friend, be a friend, and bring a friend to Christ. And so that's what you guys have really been talking about so far this morning, is that way of getting us connected to each other. And we're going to hear a little bit about that tomorrow, when we talk about our face-to-face evangelization initiative. There's really a kind of a version of that. And you guys have already been talking about ways to do that. So you didn't know your evangelizers already. That's a word that we don't use a lot as Catholics, but we do it. Just in the normal course of meeting people, like Sheri's little story right there. Meet somebody, encouraging them to join the rosary group. Other comments or feedback?
There's a church in town that has a motto that's become my motto. It's love, grow, and go. It's my mission, okay? And what I see here is, we do love one another, and we love Jesus. And how do people see the love of Christ through how we grow, or how we show it? The grow is our church, the church is the mothership, okay? So we grow through the ministries, and through sharing like this, and through what Deborah said, small groups, which I am extremely, extremely passionate about. And I think we can do a better job with them, to be honest. But the challenge that we have is the grow, the go part. See, we grow, sometimes we sit in the church and in the pews, and we grow, and we grow, but we're not going. And that's, to me, evangelization. Now, how, where we go, and who we go to share Jesus with, that's the part that Mary and some of the others mentioned, that might be a little bit different. But we have to go. That's what Jesus wants us to do. And I think there might be multiple solutions. But I go back to the Scripture, and to what it says in the Gospel. And you know, the early church, they had small groups. We, when a church grows to the size that our church is growing, I think we really need to start looking at personal sharing through small groups. We're a little bit more vocal, because most of us are leaders, okay? But the average person at this church wouldn't be as open with what they're sharing, because it's not a safe zone for them. Small groups create safe zones. And in safe zones, you can, and actually, and I know a lot of you are in small groups, I know I am, I'm in a discipleship quad, I've been for three years. We challenge one another. We say, hey, you're falling short. Hey, have you ever looked at it this way? That's what small groups do. Why do they do that? Because they love one another, and they want to help one another, bring other people into the kingdom.
Excuse me, I have to go to the minister of dog, ministry of dog.
Well, I've been sitting here in silence. I've been sitting here in silence, because that's my nature. And Father Mike just spoke to me, and he says, you've got something to say. Why don't you say it? We came here two years ago, and it was because of him, but not because I had met him yet, because I had watched him on the webcast. And I wanted to come see if it was real. And it was, it is. And I have to tell you this, because when I came, not a single person spoke to me, or my husband. And, but we kept coming back. And after a few weeks, and this was probably wrong, but we were not Catholic at the time. One morning, and I know you're not supposed to talk to others before the Mass, but I didn't know that, not being a Catholic. And went over across an aisle and spoke to someone, and told her that I had just noticed them. It was a mother, it was a woman and her mother, an elderly mother that came. And I had just lost some very important women in my life. And I just told her, I wanted to tell you how much it means to me to see y'all here together. And just that, nothing else. And I consider her a friend today. And after that, somebody told me, you're not supposed to do that in a Catholic church.
I've never heard that rule.
So whether you feel like you're blundered to something or not, if God impresses you to go and speak to someone, please do it. Because they might be waiting. Because they might be waiting. So now I'm the one who gets up and I go to someone else. And just last night, I, I've been listening to a lot of things on Formed. And I was listening for something entirely different from what we're talking about this morning, but I think it applies also. And the statement was from Father Timothy Gallagher. And he said, "Your silence gives the enemy power." So if we don't speak up for what God is asking us to do, or to speak to someone in the congregation, or to let somebody know that we are in need of help, that we need to be accepted and to know we're accepted, that we are giving the enemy. And the enemy is here, whether we want to admit it or not. So let's don't give Him the power over us.
That was what was known as witness. It's vulnerable, uh, it's needy, and it's genuine. And I am going to witness for them even further is that when they came here, they had been, she and her husband had been very active in the Protestant community, a pastor in a church, forming communities. And they came here and, as you said, listened to Live Feed and said to her husband one day, "I'm going to the Catholic church." I think he was silent. But they came over and over and came to our CIA, as it was known then, and shared their faith. And then on Easter Sunday, on Easter evening, at the vigil, proclaimed their faith in the Catholic church. And it's, did we shake the tree? No. It's the Holy Spirit that shakes the tree. And when He puts us and makes us available to somebody, it has to be a genuine, loving faith that we express, not just football games or politics or where we came from or even our families. But it can begin there, but it has to arrive at the top of the mountain.
I remember one year, not too long ago, that we filled out sometime a little intentional card that we were gonna do during Lent. And one of those things on that card said that we would introduce ourselves to someone new every Sunday. And I remember I marked that. And then it would work, it was so successful that I decided I just needed to continue with it after Lent. So I don't know, I think those intentional cards were good, that we passed out. Uh, another thing people talked about when they were first new, I remember when I was first new and I wanted to come to daily Mass. And I would come in the church and every single inn view would have somebody sitting in the inn. And I didn't know who I could climb over to get a seat or if I should climb over somebody. So I think that was, you know, that wasn't very welcoming either. I would just suggest if you could move in a little further, that, you know, you might invite somebody to sit with you.
Just a silly thing to add to what Patty just said. Have you ever seen what happens when we only have a 10 o'clock Mass instead of an eight and a 10? And people that have their designated seat, they come in and the 8 o'clock person's already sitting in it?
Oh, people actually say those things. "You're sitting in my seat." It's wrong, but we learn, but it's true.
Well, one thing that makes this parish unique is our demographic. We've all been around the block several times. The majority of us, 95%, are retired. And we're a little set in our ways. And we think, "Ah, we have a relationship with Jesus. We don't need to hear anymore." It never ends growing. And we have to remember that about everybody who comes to this parish. You're still growing. And come grow with us. You know, we have to be all-inclusive. And that's what I'm hearing today is, this parish's mission is to be all-inclusive. And so we have to work at that. We have to find ways to do that.
Thank you, DeeDee, for your words, because it made me think of something. Um, I taught the babies, first and second grade, and I always said, "You never know what you say, the effect it's gonna have on one of these little ones." But you know what? That's with adults too.
Deacon, if you could turn off your...
No, it's got nothing to do with his.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you want me to talk? Can you hear?
No, you're fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
You know, your smile might be the only smile, you guys have heard this, that somebody sees all day. We don't know what's going on in people's minds. But we have no idea the effect of our words on people. I'd be the only one that talks to them. And DeeDee, I'm so sorry that I didn't talk to you. I didn't know you were there. But I do know now. And we, we have to talk to people. Open our mouth and just talk. So, okay, here we go.
That made, that made me think of something at the, at the National Eucharistic Congress. Chris Stefanik, you guys know who Chris Stefanik is, right? One of his talk, his talk, he said, "When God opens the door, open your mouth." So it's one of the, one of the good takeaways, I think, from what we've been talking about today. All right, I want to be respectful of your time. We are not gonna get to talk about faith formation this morning because we're gonna wrap up at 10:30. It's 10:25 right now. So, uh, I'm gonna have Maggie put the, oh, the slide decks are going on the website anyway. So, uh, you'll be able to look at the slides I would have talked about for faith formation. If you have some questions for Chris and I, those of you who don't know, Chris Moreno back there is head of faith formation. So if you have some thoughts about faith formation, please let us know what you think of the new initiative. You'll see the outline in those slides. Uh, please make sure that you give us, uh, all the comments you'd like to give us on the cards. Uh, if you need more blank cards, we got more around here. Uh, I'm happy to stick around and talk more to those of you who don't have places to be. But again, we were supposed to wrap at 10:30. I want to be respectful of everybody's time. Thank you so much, seriously, for all the feedback this morning. Uh, we are, uh, we will be back here tomorrow afternoon at 1 o'clock. Uh, and the two initiatives that we hope to cover tomorrow are face-to-face evangelization. You guys are all evangelizers now, though, I can tell, so that one will go really well. Uh, and, uh, we're also gonna talk a little bit about, uh, some of our plans for the, uh, the third year of the Eucharistic revival. So, uh, please come and talk with us about those tomorrow.
Just one, one, it's nothing to do, and yes, I believe it has, you'll be the first to know this anyway, uh, that, um, you know, we, we put out an appeal yesterday and it's very, very indicative, I believe, of the richness that is out there in our parish that we don't necessarily tap into. And yet it's there. And we made an appeal for the hurricane victims. And I just couldn't get over the generosity of our parish. It was 20, $25,000 was donated by the people of our parish. And, and, yeah, it's money. No, it's, there's a, there's a heart in us. Uh, that's our parish. And, uh, it's a power. It's a power. Will anybody get to know that? No, it'll be dividend out and we'll know it ourselves, et cetera. But to, the pride that was in me, in the generosity and the spirit that is there to be tapped into is just amazing. And I just wanted to let you know that. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for coming. Y'all have a great rest of your day.